Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 10th South St. Paul School Board Meeting. Lisa, would you take the role?
Inspector Aaron.
Here.
Inspector Felton.
Here.
Inspector Diaz.
Here.
Inspector Bjorkland.
Here.
Inspector Walker.
Here.
Inspector Lallaberty.
Here.
Chair McClellan.
Here.
At seven present at 5:01.
Thank you. First, I'm looking for a motion to approve the South St. Paul School Board meeting, board meeting agenda and school board meeting minutes from July 27, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Lallaberty.
Yes.
Inspector Aaron.
Yes.
Inspector Felton.
Yes.
Inspector Diaz.
Yes.
Inspector Bjorkland.
Yes.
Inspector Walker.
Yes.
Chair McClellan.
Yes.
At seven yes.
Thank you. That is approved. First item on our agenda is the 2020-2021 school year update. Dr. Webb.
Thank you. Tonight, in front of you, we have our first step about our base learning model for the coming school year. So we have had a number of kind of ramp up conversations to tonight's conversation. We had Wednesday board meeting last week and in a pandemic, everyone, our staff, our community is just always appreciative of reminders. I'm going to start with just a reminder, two, three minute overview of what we talked about at our last meeting. Just tick through a couple of those slides and then give you any new updates that we have about our base learning model. So Lisa, if you would like to shift over to the PowerPoint from last Wednesday, I'm just going to give a couple of reminders and then we'll go into that discussion. So on your screen, you can see that the starting point is called a flexible learning model plan. So we know that we have to be flexible coming into this school year. We don't honestly know where the pandemic will trend throughout the year. Nobody has the crystal ball to say, here's what December is going to be exactly. So we have to have prep for all three of the learning models. What we also know from the state is that they are very serious about social distancing. We have to maintain social distancing. We have to wear masks. Those aren't options for schools. So in the in-person model, if we wanted to have everyone back, we would need twice the square footage of our campus. So we really put a line through the in-person model and we really are just talking about hybrid, which is half or less of the students back in on a day one, day two, or group one, group two schedule, or distance learning. Next. So again, we put a line through distance, the in-person scenario because we would need double the footprint. Hybrid, again, we have an A-B distance, A-B schedule that we are recommending to you as board members. In that schedule, in that scenario, a group of students come in Monday and Thursday in person, or Tuesday and Friday, with a distance learning day Wednesday. Next. Our in-person and hybrid scenarios all have a number of prevention practices. We're set to go with PPE with our, with our, with all of our sites. We have all of our chemicals and disinfectants set for the school year regardless of what model the board chooses moving forward. We also know we'll have additional PPE from the state. We have a number of safety protocols that we have to follow in schools and that we're all following day in, day out, like wearing a mask, keeping socially distanced, hand washing and the like. Next. Chad Schmidt at the last meeting walked through this group one, group two model and this is what came out to families last week, last Thursday, I believe, along with a family survey to say, state your preference with the family survey for group, like every other day, hybrid option or distance learning. We know there are a number of families, here's our elementary schedule and version of that. We know there are a number of families where there are underlying conditions that are saying, I only want distance learning. So there's no one right choice, choice for all families. Next. Distance learning scenario, everyone is learning via technology. In that distance learning mode, our teachers are instructing to students while they're at home. Next. So we know that we got a lot of good feedback from our surveys, from our staff, from our community when we got input on our distance learning plan from last year. We look to continue to improve that as we ramp up into this school year. Next. We have had feedback and guidance from the state, our family surveys, we have our pandemic advisory committee, and our design team meetings throughout the summer have continued to inform our recommendations. Next. We know that safety is our top priority. If kids and families and staff don't feel safe, we have to continue to make sure that we're putting in place the supports to help with that transition. We also know that we want high quality instruction. And I want to give a shout out to all the teacher teams and our, our teacher leaders and administrators that are working to really refine our priority standards in our district, trying to identify whether we're hybrid or whether we are distance, that we have a real clear set of learning targets for this year. Again, we all have to be flexible. Nobody knows where the pandemic's going to go and where it will take us. We all need flexibility. Next. We continue to try to use our data-driven decision-making. We want to make sure that we're staying focused on educational equity and support. And we want to make sure that we are trying to get out best, accurate, timely communication to our families as well. Next. We just got recent updates on July 30th from Governor Walz. Seems like, you know, two months ago that we got that. It was really only like 10 days ago. And again, he's just basically giving us a data chart that comes from the county. And today, we had a chance to meet with our, our public health nurse. And she walked through the recommendation and how they crunched the data and just basically saying that we are just above the level of hybrid for all. So their data set is two weeks old. So Dakota County superintendents, we have been calculating our own data. And if you want to go ahead, one more slide. Currently, we are in that second from the top or that 10 to 19 number of cases per 10,000. But if you look at this, the most recent data set, we've now, and we will drop into the hybrid learning for all students, 20 to 29 range. So we are just barely in the level, second from the top, we'll drop into that middle range here in the next couple of weeks. Next. We're learning about how the 14-day case counts work. Our public health nurse that was just assigned to us will stay in close contact with us, will be in direct contact with our nursing staff and the like here in our district. We, like I said, we just administered our family choice survey, just a plea for families. If you haven't completed that survey, please do. We have about a quarter of the survey participants filled out so far. We still need three quarters of our families to weigh in. We are trying to also, we had a staffing survey about two weeks ago. So we're trying to one by one, talk to every staff that has an underlying condition or a family member with an underlying condition. And then we know that in our finance world, there's always significant budget impact. Next. So to wrap up, we want to continue to share our models with our families. We want them to complete the survey. That went out last week, the surveys and process of being completed. Just a reminder for families, if you haven't completed it, get on and complete that. We want to analyze those, the data results. We want to determine the best learning model as we start the year. And our hope is to give families choice. Finalize, we want to wrap up with all of our operational details. We are working with our teams to continue to put final touches on plans. We're working with our staff and building teams to do the same at the building site level. So lots of good work still going on. And we're about a month away from Labor Day. Next. So a couple additional points from when we were last together. You just heard about the public health, health nurse. So Connie Gerling Squire and I walked through our hybrid model and recommendations with the public health nurse today. She supported our plan. And again, she said, we're just ready to tick into that hybrid for all data set from the state of Minnesota. We also are just trying to get early data from our family survey. It's just so early. I'm a little reluctant to share anything tonight as we're trying to crunch the data ourselves here back on the site. But just know there are families that are requesting both options, both hybrid and distance, and lots of both. Next, I would just, I want to give a minute to a couple of people on screen. I'm going to, I'm going to just give Mark Fenton one minute to just talk about, we have an A-B, which is a group one, group two schedule, and disinfecting our schools has come up frequently. We are going to disinfect our schools every night. But Mark, could you just talk about our cleaning process here in the district?
Yeah, I just wanted to give everyone a, that we're already doing, we're already disinfecting bathrooms currently. And so this enhanced cleaning that we'll be doing will be disinfecting more commonly touched spaces like handrails, doorknobs, and we'll be going into classrooms with an electric backpack sprayer or electrostatic backpack sprayer, spraying disinfectant on all the surfaces, which then what needs to happen is we need 10 minutes of drying time to, to kill all the viruses and bacterias. And that takes about, you know, that's just the standard drying time. And so we'll be doing that on a nightly basis.
And so we have deep cleaning every night. And so in an A-B or group one, group two model, we want to make sure that everyone has a clean place to come into every single day. I also next have Chad Schmidt here at the ready and the instructional team with Chad and principals have been working hard to create an on-ramp, a transition into hybrid learning. And I'm going to let Chad talk for just a minute about that slower transition into the school year. Chad?
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Hello. Good evening, board members. Lisa, you have a one pager for us that we might show too. So what we know and recognize is that with the tumultuous time that we're living in, distance learning is likely to be part of our educational experience this year. Our preferred mode is to have students in, in schools with us. And so that's the hybrid model. And so what we've been working on is a transition to help that hybrid model be successful. And so what you see here is a proposal of a three, approximately three-week walk-in or ramp up to hybrid. And so in the first week, which is the Labor Day week of our school year, we would like to use that week to establish and develop strong relationships with our students and their families through something that's on our calendar as a, as a one-day student family connections. We would spread that out over this first week and have one-on-one opportunities to meet with our students and their families. And we would use that first week to build up some of the foundation of distance learning practices, including things like logging into the systems, retrieving messages, accessing learning, learning opportunities that are online. What you'll see in week two is that we would spend that time at the elementary level, helping prepare our students to enter in the hybrid format the following week. Back on a slide that Dr. Webb shared before, you noticed that there were preventative practices and safety protocols. So we would be spending this week teaching those to our students through the use of videos, through the use of role modeling, so that they know, they and their families know how our schools will be safe when they return and how to successfully navigate our hallways, our beginning and end of school day routines, our lunch rooms, those kinds of things. And because we'd be doing this through a distance, that we would be continuing to practice the distance learning strategies that students will need, both in the hybrid model and in, and if we were to go to a full distance learning approach. So starting in week three, which is the week of September 21st, our elementary students whose, whose families choose hybrid would start to arrive on a group one, group two model. So group one kiddos would show up on Monday and Thursday. Group two students and families would show up on Tuesday and Friday. And so we would be practicing those practices, the safe practices and the learning through the hybrid model at the elementary level. And at the secondary level, we would be preparing students to show up in hybrid the following week. So then in week four, which is the week of September 28th, you can see that both secondary and ABE shifts to a blue hybrid. And so what that means is our group one and group two students would be showing up again respectively on Monday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Friday. And we would be putting into, into practice the, the safe procedures and the, the learning that we'll be doing in the hybrid model. And then you can see by week five, our early learning students and families will transition into the hybrid model. So, so this is a intentional and staged process, trying to utilize effective relationship building and training for students and for their families on how to be a successful learner in the hybrid model while also using some of the distance learning strategies. We want to be clear, and Dr. Webb mentioned this before, that we've received a great deal of feedback from our students, from our families, from our staff about the distance learning model that we were forced to put into play in short order last spring. And so we have made a number of revisions to it, improvements that are based on that feedback. And so we are excited to put those into practice as we head, head forward into this school year in an intentional and deliberate and safe way.
Thanks, Dr. Schmidt. So just to summarize, I'm recommending the hybrid to be our base learning model to start the year. What we also know is that the state says we are required to offer distance learning for families that need that choice as well. So tonight, I'm recommending the hybrid model based off of the state data and the data model, based off of all of our leadership team, study and conversation and planning, along with all of their site teams and feedback. And just the recent connect today with our public health nurse in alignment with Minnesota Department of Public Health. And so our plans moving forward is to adopt a slow start to the school year and an on-ramp that gets all of our families well-connected, well-transitioned, allows our, our staff to be in place for a few weeks to get comfortable themselves, make sure that the families are understanding that at any point in time, we might be back in distance learning. So getting that skill, again, refreshed at the start of the year, but getting everybody like on a snow day and a two-hour late start, a chance to really kind of clear off your driveway, safely get out of your garage and into school. This transition plan gives space for our staff to really be training students and families and really getting them set for the start of this different school year. So with that, thanks, Lisa, for displaying. I'm going to come back here and I'm going to open up the discussion and conversation for any other questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Chad or Dave before we move on to what we recommend?
I actually have one for Mark.
Oh, okay.
Mark, so I had heard a lot of comments about the A-B model and instead of doing A-B, maybe do an A-A day so that those kids are all grouped together. And even though you're fogging and then Thursday, Friday would be the B group, is there, because you're fogging and sanitizing and cleaning, is there really any difference between that A-A group and an A-B start to the week?
No, there wouldn't be. We'd be disinfecting on a nightly basis. And I, I wouldn't use the term fogging because that would be vaporizing the chemical and we don't want to do that. We want to keep it particulate pretty big. So it's just misting.
Misting.
Yep. And so there, there, I don't see any benefit to an A-A schedule.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I have practically the same question, but from a different angle with, from the aspect of the, the teaching. Is there any reason that we chose group one to be on Monday and Thursday and group two to be on Tuesday and Friday as opposed to one group meeting Monday, Tuesday, and one group meeting Thursday, Friday? That's a question I've heard numerous times. And I think it would be worthwhile to just spend a minute and explain that decision.
Yeah, I'll start. And Chad, feel free to add color commentary if you want. So when students, and I'll use the secondary as an example, secondary, when assignments are pushed out for a week at a time with all the instruction on a Wednesday, for example, students in that setting would get a day Thursday or Friday with the new material, with their instructor before the weekend, have the weekend, come off of the weekend, have another day or two just to be prepared to get everything submitted by Wednesday. And we think that that's a pretty good loop. And it's not all compact. There isn't a five-day break. We think that some just more regular spaced-out connect is best instructionally. So kids get the soak time. So they hear a lesson, practice it, come back, practice it again, and then submit. Chad?
Yeah, I, that's it right there, Chris. That, that notion of we would be seeing students every three or four days, where in an A-A model, there's a whole, almost a whole week before you see a student again. And so both from a relationship standpoint of staying connected, but also an academic content mastery standpoint of learning the material, that we think a couple of days in between is better than a whole week in between.
Very good. Thank you.
Wendy, you have something to say?
Just a kind of a question for Dave. I know as part of our tri-district cooperative with West St. Paul and Inver Grove Heights, I know Inver Grove has released most of their information regarding what they're going to be doing. But have you talked to our neighboring superintendents and gotten their opinions and their feelings and what they're doing and how we can kind of work together to get this to be a very successful start of the year?
Thanks. Yeah, we, we had just met last week. I think we met the week before that. So we might actually be one of the sites. We might actually need to be the site for the healthcare course this year due to the pandemic. So we have been working hand-in-hand not just with superintendents, but our curriculum directors have come together, our high school principals have come together. And we've been trying to move as a team. And we still don't know what West St. Paul will decide as their model. Inver Grove just announced hybrid last Wednesday night. So we are trying to stay connected and supported. We still have our tri-district coordinator organizing all of our programming. And like, as I mentioned, we might need to be a site for the healthcare course this year.
Dave and Wendy, can I chime in?
Yes.
So the other thing that I would add is the, the CAPS programming, the career and college readiness programming that we offer across the tri-district, we settled on Wednesday as being our distance learning, flex learning day at all three school districts to provide some consistency and coordination for the students who participate in, in those three different programs and the teachers who teach in those three programs. So that is, that is one specific example of numerous conversations that have gotten us to be on the same page and make sure that our systems will, will still allow and promote our students participating in those exciting career readiness courses.
Thank you.
I had one more question about the parent survey. So only having a quarter of the responses, Dave, does that impact your, your recommendation? Or right now, is that just for having a plan with numbers and knowing where, where families are, are heading?
Yeah, so just as I, so I'll just speak to the complexity of the survey. So some families have one kid, some have two, some have three, some have four. So getting all the different bins of, of data crunched, when we just sent it out at the end of last week and as we're early in the data crunching, so I wish I had you some beautiful graphs and charts. I have enough data in my mind to say, there are a lot of families that want both. There are a lot of families that just say, I want to opt into distance learning only. And there are a lot of families that say, I really just need my kid back in school. And like I said, there's no right answer. And there seems to be hundreds of both.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Patty.
About those folks that choose distance learning or hybrid learning, are we limiting them like per semester that once they commit to distance learning or hybrid learning that they can't change? If there's no change in the school format due to the rates, the infection rates, but are we, are they committed? Or are they going to be able to bounce back and forth?
So we're asking families to declare. That is the purpose and the intention of the survey. And just having been in the education business long enough, things happen. And I'll just say, you could have a student in a classroom in a hybrid mode and they might have a reason where they need to pull into distance learning. So we have to be flexible, but we are expecting people to take the first trimester of the year in this choice.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chad or Mark or Dave? If not, I think I'd like to go around and see where everybody stands, if they agree with the administration's recommendation or they have one of their own. Who would like to start?
The last name, beginning with A, I could start by saying I'm totally confused and undecided. Thank you.
I can follow up with that. Um, I mean, I've heard a lot from, uh, I really appreciate all the comments that we've gotten from the staff and from the community, uh, people stopping me out on the street and more so than I've had in the, the previous six years that I've been on the board. And weighing in the state guidelines, the administrative recommendation, and then all of those comments from the, the staff and the community. And it was not unanimous, uh, for sure. There were comments on both sides. People very, uh, very strongly in favor of the hybrid, getting the kids back into the school, at least on a part-time basis. And those that say, no, we should be keeping them out and doing the distance learning. But just looking at everything, all of those together as a, as a whole, uh, it really points towards the hybrid learning. And so that is my recommendation for tonight.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I, I can go, Jeff. Yeah, I too have heard both opinions from, from families in the area. Uh, some like the distance, some like the hybrid. I am in support of your plan. I like how you're gradually getting us into the plans with the start of school year. And I know how hard we will work to keep everyone safe because they are part of our community, they are a part of our families. We will do everything that we can to keep our students and staff safe. So thank you for all your work and what you've done. I know this is a lot of work. Um, so we will do everything we can to protect our students and our staff. And we thank everyone for their input, the letters, the calls that we have received as board members. So thank you very much. And I know how hard you're working. So I am in support of your plan.
Thank you, Wendy. Patty?
Yeah. Um, I'm in support of your plan with some concerns. Uh, the emails that I've been getting are from a lot of our teachers who are sincerely deeply concerned and they have justifiable concerns. And so I will support the plan, but I really would invite the administration to, um, invest more time in communicating with our teachers. So not only do we benefit from their wisdom, but also so that they know, so that, so they have a sense of where to, that they can ask a question and it will be answered. So, um, I support the, the proposal, but let's get a little bit, a little bit more into communicating with our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Linda?
Uh, I too support, uh, the, the plan as it's been given to us today. I, I really liked the ramp up, um, getting kids ready for what it will look like. Um, I think is very smart. I also think it gives us time, um, at home so that we can get some data about the county together and not have to, to put our families, um, and teachers at risk. Um, so I, I support it. And I love what Patty said about communication.
Thank you, Linda. Nikki?
I too support the slow start. Um, I, I, I support the easing into the year. Um, I don't think we have to be in a rush, um, to make this happen. So, um, I like, I like that we're taking some time to, uh, ease into it. And then if the numbers stay down and, and, uh, things are looking good, then we can move into the next step.
Thank you, Nikki. I honestly did not know which way I was going to head until I heard the easing into it. Uh, I think that's a wonderful idea. Get used, everybody get used to everything and was, then we'll be able to see more numbers and what we're, and going forward. So I'm going to support the administration also. So thank you, everybody. Um, next is a public listening session report. Dr. Webb?
Yes. So we had one community member reach out today just asking about how to view tonight's meeting. So we were able to respond to him and make sure that he, uh, was able to follow those directions. And, um, that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Dave. Next up is staffing. Kathy Miller.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, so in your packet, uh, for approval this evening is our regular staffing report, plus we did have a supplemental that, uh, we, uh, posted late this afternoon. So in the regular, uh, staffing report is our usual under-certified. We have some appointments, some changes of assignment for the 2021 school year, some additional hours, and we have our, our built assignments, members there. Most of those folks are listed there, some curriculum writing. And then under-certified, we have some leaves of absence and, uh, some resignations. Are there any questions under the, the regular staffing, uh, under-certified? Okay. And I'll keep going to the classified. Here again, we have some additional hours, uh, for some of our existing staff. And then we also have some leaves of absence under our non-certified. Any questions for that group? Okay. Then I will move on to the supplemental that you may not have had a chance to take a peek at. So under certified, we have a, a couple of resignations and a leave of absence. And then under non-certified, uh, we have an appointment and, uh, a retirement. Are there any questions about any of the supplemental staffing items?
Kathy, um, where would I find this, uh, supplemental?
The supplemental should be right underneath the staffing report and, uh, board book.
There it is. Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
I do have a question about, uh, the COVID-related question. When, when you're ready to get, to go there?
Sure. I'm.
Are you ready? Okay. Um, I've had a couple of emails, uh, concerned about in order to, um, because, because, uh, teachers are vulnerable, uh, their health is vulnerable, uh, to the COVID situation, that it, do I understand it correctly that those that qualify for that are put on medical leave?
Uh, each situation is individual. So it depends on what the circumstances are for all our staff. Uh, so if, if staff members have, um, underlying issues, medical issues that do not allow them to work on-site, then we will have to look at each one of those situations individually and decide, uh, if we can accommodate those restrictions or if they need to take a medical leave of absence. So it, it really is, uh, it depends.
Then is there room to determine that this individual might not be able to teach, uh, in a hybrid situation, but could teach distance learning? Or is it just either or? You, they, once they're on medical leave, they cannot teach?
Well, if they're on a medical leave, then they would actually be on a leave of absence and not, and not working. So whether it's a teacher or a parent, if they're on a medical leave of absence, they would not be working.
Okay. So we would end up paying them to be on medical leave, plus we would need to hire a sub. So we would be double, doubling up our expense.
That is.
I'm confused how if, if you have medical leave because you cannot be in a classroom, but yet you, you're still functioning and could potentially teach distance, why would we remove that person from our rosters and end up paying double? Um, it can be a conditional, a conditional medical leave where just the, the hybrid situation, they can't teach and then they, but they can teach distance learning just for the benefit of financial, the financial end of it, but also for the benefit of the teacher. The teacher still can be a productive member of our staff as a distance teacher. So is that a policy that we can't get around? Or can you share with me a little bit more on that?
So it, it really is again situational. So it depends on the each individual situation. So I'll, I'll try to make something up here. So if, if we have first grade teachers, I'm going to use teachers since that's your example. Um, if we have four first grade teachers and all four of those first grade teachers have health issues, um, we couldn't possibly accommodate all four of those health issues for all four of those first grade teachers because we need to have a T, teachers in the building. So we're, we're going to have to assess each one of those situations and determine what we can accommodate and what we cannot accommodate. And those that we can't accommodate, uh, we'll have to look at medical leaves of absence. So it, it really is, uh, a situation by situation, um, a, analysis of the situation.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And thank you for that explanation. But what I'm getting at is that if a teacher is determined to be put on medical leave because of the COVID situation, otherwise in function, you know, in a normal time, they can function in the classroom, but because of this COVID situation, the teacher needs to be put on medical leave, why can't that teacher also, why can't that teacher be assigned to distance learning then?
Well, what if our students are all in the building?
Well, then that's, I'm talking about right now, we're doing distance and, uh, hybrid. So we, the distance option is still there. And, and why can't we have our, our teachers who can't teach in the classroom and are perfectly capable of doing distance learning? What, why can't they be available? What I'm hearing is that medical leave is medical leave and they're not available for any teaching. Is that correct?
That is correct. If someone is on a medical leave. If, if we can accommodate staff members, teachers to, uh, do distance learning and, and they are still working, then we will try to do that. But I, I can't guarantee you that everyone who has a medical condition or a health condition that allows them, uh, indicates that they cannot work.
Mm-hmm.
They're at a higher risk. I can't guarantee that every single person we would be able to accommodate.
Right.
I don't know. I can't answer that. And so that's an individual situation, looking at the grade level, looking at the, the school, looking at the whole picture.
Okay. Well, complicated, isn't it?
It is complicated. It really is, Patty. So there, uh, and I'll just say, uh, every time I walk past Kathy's office, she's here till like nine o'clock at night. Um, and she's here every weekend, just ramping up to the school year. It's the most complicated, uh, position right now in our district.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Dave.
Kathy, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, is there an appeal process with representation for somebody who gets ruled against?
Uh, and, uh, this was a question you asked me last time too, Bill. So it's, it's not necessarily an appeal process. It's an interactive process when we're looking at accommodation. So appeal is not exactly the, the right kind of frame to go through. It is an interactive process, trying to see how we could possibly accommodate when restrictions are in place.
Okay. Let me change the appeal to due process. Are we offering teachers due process in the event that they're ruled against?
Uh, due process, it's an interactive process. So I would say, yes, we are. All staff.
And, um, if somebody is, uh, practicing due process, is there something saying that you can't inform the school board that this is going, that we are going through this process?
I'm not sure I understand your question exactly.
We would like to be more in the loop than we are as far as, uh, educators and the way they're being, um, dealt with and judged. That I would like to know more about it. Is that possible, Kathy?
Um, well, the situations that I am, um, conversations I'm having with staff members are confidential. So I, as far as their own health situations, it's not things that I am able to share. That would be considered private.
Could I just add, Kathy? So Bill, just so you know, I sat with Kathy for an hour, uh, just last week, just to kind of see the tree diagram, like if, if A, then B happens, if, if, uh, C, then D happens. And, uh, working through all those, uh, the many stipulations of our federal law and state law and guidelines. Um, so Kathy has, uh, all of that structured and laid out. And, uh, and we are following, trying to follow and support every staff member, uh, and especially those with the underlying condition, a family member with an underlying condition, like a parent or a spouse or a child. So all of those are being vetted and supported. Um, and, and there is also just a number of, uh, kind of doctor verifications and those types of things that she's managing as well. So, uh, she's dotting all the I's and crossing the T's on that process from what I've seen firsthand.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other quick questions?
Can I ask a follow-up? Yeah. Um, and it directed to Kathy. Um, just some clarification. Kathy, are you there? Yeah, there you go. Um, so the, the teacher who is granted, um, the, because a family member is, has an underlying condition and, and they are granted, they're not put on medical leave. They're, they are put into distance learning. Uh, they will become distance learning teachers if they are okay with having families with underlying condition family members?
Again, that is going to depend. It, it wouldn't necessarily, um, if we couldn't accommodate such a request, then they could be placed on, or they could request a family leave. It's not a medical leave because they personally are not ill. It could be a family leave. So again, it's kind of the same situation. It depends on the bigger picture of where we need staff on-site.
So we, we will not, um, we will not segment teachers into you're a hybrid teacher, you are a distance teacher. You, you have to be everything or nothing.
Um, so again, that's going to depend that.
Once the situation has been approved, where you said, oh, we accept. And so, I'm sorry, go ahead. I interrupted you.
No, that's okay. Uh, so it's my understanding that at the secondary, so the middle and high school level, they, um, your teachers will be your teachers, whether you are in a distance learning, we are in a distance learning mode or the hybrid mode. So you are the teacher. At the elementary, it's a little different scenario. Um, depending on how many students or how many families we have that are in the distance learning mode, we, uh, are likely to have some teachers that are just considered distance learning teachers.
Okay.
And some teachers will, will be on-site and considered hybrid learning teachers.
Okay.
It all, again, depends on what families choose and, and, and what that looks like. I mean, we could have, um, we could have one kindergarten distance learning teacher between, uh, Lincoln and Composia, if that's what the student, the family requests are. So it, it really depends on, on the big picture there.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Okay, Kathy. Thank you very much. Very helpful.
Thank you.
Take some time off sometime. Um, next we need to talk about what our future board meetings are going to look like. Are we going to meet virtually? If, if kids are in school, are we going to meet virtually? Um, uh, that's where I'd like to start. Where, where anybody like to talk about it?
So I, I could give you just a two-minute update on what we learned from Town Square Television.
Okay.
And, uh, just have to get into the right, um, communication page here. So just, uh, we have the ability to, uh, change at any upcoming and future meeting to be in-person if we wish. So our next meeting is August 24th. Um, we don't have to change a mode or we could change the mode for August 24th. Town Square can do a virtual or an all-in-person at, uh, 5:00 PM or 7:15 on that date. So what's more challenging is like, uh, doing a hybrid where some of you were at home, some of you were on-site. That creates some challenging hurdles for Town Square. We're not sure we can make that happen for August 24th, but if we wanted to do an in-person or virtual, 5:00 PM or 7:00 PM on the 24th, that is an option.
And then here's another piece to it too, is, um, I, I think, Chris, you were on that meeting, um, and MSBA legal representation, um, had said that they felt that school board meeting should An MSBA legal representation had said that they felt that school board meetings should still be virtual because of the people who would like to watch, would like to be involved and but can't come in themselves to the meeting. So that was just an instruction from SBA that they that they had their recommendation on school board meetings. Did I get that right, Chris? Do you remember that?
Yes. It's easy for us, well, I won't say easy. It's possible for us to social distance ourselves.
Yeah.
And it sounds like Town Square TV can accommodate that. But these are open meetings and people need to have the ability to come to them. And the, you know, us social distancing in a location may prohibit anyone else from being able to enter just because they need to social distance as well. Then we run into problems with the open meeting. So that's what MSBA was was referring to.
So if I could add into that too, so if we were moving to in-person, we'd have to choose a cow location, City Hall or City Hall for the regular meeting. We already know that there's partitions in place. The city council has been meeting. The seven seats are on the platform. They're partitioned, but they're not six feet apart. And and we could move some board members down to the tables where Lisa typically sits. And I would, I can move down to tables or beyond. So just those options are there for board members as well. And I think in the MSBA, I mean, your overarching piece is can you make sure things are recorded during the pandemic when people are having a hard time getting there?
So question, can the meeting be live streamed? The in-person meeting be live streamed for the public so they don't have to attend?
You mean like it is doing right now?
Yeah.
Yes, we're live streaming right now.
Yeah, so we could potentially meet in person, six, you know, socially distant and and then stream it out.
I don't know that answer to that.
Okay.
I would like to still meet virtually through August. That's just my personal opinion.
I've heard a lot of comments lately from my emails that once we do the hybrid formula, if the teachers and all the kids are meeting in person, why isn't the school board meeting in person?
Right. And that starts in September. So we wouldn't have to make that decision until September.
So that'll have to come up again. Yeah.
Yep.
I can support Jeff on his decision. We can, we can get through August and talk about it. Maybe at the 24th of August meeting when.
Okay.
I agree too, Jeff. I like, I like what you said.
Does anybody not want to meet virtually on the next August meeting? I know it's a double negative. Okay, looks like we're going to meet virtually at our next meeting and we'll talk about going further at our next meeting, what what the next steps are. Everybody okay with that?
So we'll just put this back on the agenda for a decision on the next meeting agenda.
Yep. Okay, next is consent items. I'm looking for a motion to approve. Financial claims, bills payable, staffing, appointments, resignations, transfers, retirements, abolishments, and leaves. Thank you. And a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorklund?
Yeah.
And Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
And that is approved.
I did not vote.
Did we miss Nikki?
Yeah.
There was a lot of static when Nikki's.
Something happened.
So can we just?
John's mowing the lawn and he's right outside. But my vote is also yes.
Thank you, Nikki. My vote is seven yeas.
Thank you. Thank you, Nikki. That is approved. We have no policies tonight to review, so we'll move to our first resolution, the approval. Looking for more, first, the approval from South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution for the adoption of the base learning model for 2020, 2021. Lisa, will you read the resolution? And it's a long one.
Dude, we have a motion.
Uh, no, I need a motion to approve.
Oh.
And a second.
Second.
Lisa, will you read the resolution?
The resolution for the adoption of the base learning model for the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year and other COVID-19 related matters. Now therefore be it resolved by the school board of special school district number six as follows. The superintendent is hereby directed to implement the following base learning model to open the 2020, 2021 school year in hybrid. The superintendent is hereby authorized after consultation with the school board chair and notification to the school board to select and implement a different learning model for the school district or any specific school buildings without school board action if the superintendent reasonably believes that prompt implementation of a different learning model is necessary and that constraints of time and public health considerations render it impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve the implementation. The learning model selected and implemented by the superintendent shall continue in effect unless and until the school board, in consultation with the superintendent and appropriate school district staff and public health officials, deems it in the best interest of the school district and its students to implement a different learning model. The superintendent will provide regular updates to the school board regarding the school district's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH respectively.
Thank you, Lisa. Dave, any final thoughts on this?
No, so I just want to come back and just say, we're starting in a hybrid, but there's a couple of week transition into hybrid. We want to start slow, get our students, make sure more than anything else that our staff is fully ready and comfortable to lift off the start of the school year. So we're building in that couple extra weeks at the elementary. It's a three-week ramp up at the secondary. And then we will be into our hybrid mode. So I just wanted to reiterate that clearly one more time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Bjorklund?
Yeah.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes, sorry about the lawnmower.
Inspector Arndt?
Lisa, could you come back to me? I'm still undecided, okay?
Yes. Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yeah.
Inspector Arndt?
I'm going to vote no on this. And I want a minute of explanation. And that is that I look at the governor's decision as being a roulette wheel and they're daring us to gamble on this. And I feel that where I support the rest of the board, I'm your votes and respect it. I feel that it's against my conscience to vote, to expose, unneedly expose anybody. And therefore, with prejudice and reservations, I'm going to make a no vote. Thank you.
And Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's six yeas and one nay.
The motion is approved. Next is the approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the naming recommendation for the River Heights Building. Is there a motion to approve? And a second. Did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Webb?
Thank you. So last week, we brought the recommendation forward to rename the River Heights Building. We are proud of the purchase of this building, the renovation of the building. Couple of weeks ago, a couple of weeks away from opening up the CLC staff doors for them to get into the building. We'll also host on the first floor, Community Education. Excuse me. And we went through a lengthy process of inviting our community to submit their ideas and option for what this building could be named. We went through a process of narrowing that and really tried to align with our South history and tradition. So tonight, we are bringing forth the recommendation to name our renovated new facility, the South St. Paul Education Center.
Thank you, Dave. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I was just wondering, should we name it the South St. Paul Schools Education Center? Add schools in there?
I think we just settled on the South St. Paul Education Center. Education implies schools, to me.
I was hoping for South St. Paul Packers Education Center. But thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Bill, do you have something to say?
Yeah, Jeff, does anybody remember me making a comment last week about not having a chance to maybe shout the merits of Dr. Dave Metzen and all he's done for our program? I've known him for 70 years and known him to be positive. And and I didn't think we had any discussion on it. And I thought we would have a discussion on it tonight. Either way, I'm fine with it, but I just want to reiterate that he's more than deserving and wonder if anybody else has any thoughts on this at this point in time. Thank you.
Yeah, I can tell you.
Thank you, Bill.
All the, all of the 60 submissions were discussed and vetted by the committee. And it was a difficult narrowing process because Dave's name was a great recommendation. And there were many other names that were submitted, which are incredible South St. Paul names for this building. So in the end, we came to consensus as our committee with board member participation and facilities and building rep participation to land with the South St. Paul Education Center.
Yes, because remember.
Any other discussion?
Remember, Bill, we did name the secondary cafeteria after Dr. Metzen, if you recall that.
Yeah, Wendy, I'm aware of that. But, you know, few times in a lifetime does a person who's done as much for as long as he has have a chance to get that recognition? And I feel it's more than deserved and I will continue to feel that way. I can live with the decision we make, but I I still want my feelings to be known and to know that that he is recognized for everything he's done. And and most of you don't know how much he's done for this community, for the schools. And I just want to want the name out there. And, you know, that's my purpose. Other than that, it's it's not a life or death thing. It's just an observation. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Bill. Any other discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorklund?
Yeah.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt? Inspector Felton?
Yeah.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
That's six yeas and one nay.
Thank you. And that is approved. Next, we'll move to the board members' reports, any committees you've attended. And we've moved, where have you seen a passion down to this too? We'll start with Nikki.
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, Nikki. Patty?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Patty. Chris?
Just a thank you to all of the people that reached out to any one of us to give them, give us your opinions. It really was helpful in us forming our decision on what we are going to do tonight. And some of the emails didn't even state an opinion of which way to go, but just raised concerns and ideas and such. And all of that is really helpful to us as we work through this. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that contacted us.
Thank you, Chris. Bill?
I have nothing tonight, Jeff.
Thank you. Linda?
Yeah, I wanted to echo what Chris had said. I think too, there was a lot of emails that had a lot of research in it, great articles, links to presentations. So, you know, it just goes to show again that teachers never stop teaching, even during the summer, even during a pandemic. So thank you for sending all of that. And then that was it. I thought, oh, community ed meetings, we don't meet until September.
Thank you, Linda. And Wendy?
I have no committee reports to do at this time. 9/17, we meet next week. Another virtual meeting with them. And I too want to echo Chris and Linda's thoughts about hearing from our, from our families, from our staff. It is very, very kind of you to take that time to, to, to write to us. And like Linda said, sending the links, that is wonderful. I enjoy reading them. I look forward to reading them and we look forward to.
Well, thank you, Wendy. I will say thank you to everybody that contacted me also. We do listen and your opinion matters. And thank you again. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. And a second. Linda will take the second. Okay.
I'll take the second.
Any discussion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorklund?
Yeah.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Here's a word you haven't heard, yes.
And Chair McClellan?
Yes, and Lisa, thank you for all the work you did tonight.
Yes, thank you. That's seven yeas, that's 608.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.